The, uh, public meeting was all supposed to be over there. Roll call. Jason is absent and so you do gotta business, some business work is. Mike? There hasn't been, Mike, Eric.
Myself, Ressavicki.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Consent agenda. Um, any question on the agenda?
There's a little one over there.
Sorry, no, it's me.
Okay, minutes, questions on the minutes. The national report, all of the unknowns.
Don't have anything out of the ordinary on that.
Claims.
You'll note that, that one check is going to be voided, so when you make your motion to approve checks, I found out after I'd written this check that it was on the credit card still.
Okay.
I had a statement and I had it on the credit card still, so I'll just point the way.
So many people went to this, uh, media conference.
Two.
Two. So yeah, so we stayed in a really nice hotel, they went by themselves.
I'm gonna change the location, I moved this year down to Central Lake, since they're doing that at UC Suites and out there they got too big, so they moved it down to Central. I heard they're explaining, they're a pretty good size crowd.
Any other questions?
There's nothing in here on, uh, how long are you ready to get in?
Uh, I asked you, I remember last Friday, uh, Carlsons and Mike and Matt are working together, I think they figured out what they're gonna do, they haven't put a new one in yet.
Almost a week.
We'll get it done.
Yeah, as long as it's still working.
Yeah.
Any other questions, otherwise, someone like to make a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda as consented with notation of the voided check to Hampton and Sweets.
One second.
One second.
Okay, Steve?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
That's off, yes? Mike?
Yes.
Mike, just, thank you. Okay, it's time for a public comment, so we are now a portion of our agenda set aside for public comment, each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening, excuse me. We request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we will advise you, when that five minute time period has elapsed, please remember that this is a public meeting for the conduct of the business of the Plainview Public School District. Offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should further be advised that there's no legal protection for any comments that are made. Are there any public comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I know that you're meeting to discuss junior high co-op-ing of athletics, and when you meet with Creighton, there is no opportunity for public comments, so I would just like to comment right now. Um, I know you would all agree that student education comes first ahead of sports, um, but I'm a little concerned about the quote that was put in the paper about practicing practices being held using the seventh period of the school day for travel time and using the eighth period as a practice time. So I'm just wondering what plans are being made, because right now the junior high is busy, eight periods out of the day, so what are we gonna cut? Um, right now, seventh period is music time, and it's required for all junior high students that they take either band, choir, or both. Um, so I'm concerned, will you change the schedule for music? Is it gonna affect the music program? Um, I would certainly hope we're not gonna end up with a situation like we have right now in high school, where kids are having a hard time scheduling music classes and then having to create something independent for them, which I think hurts programs. Um, it affects the students, it affects the groups, um, it certainly affects teachers. Um, so I just want you to be aware that that is what is seventh block right now, and just wondered what is going to be done to, uh, help that.
Any others?
Hi, I'm Sally Showed, I'm Colton's mom who's gonna go into eighth grade, he's also a music student and doesn't wanna give that up. He also, at first, was very apprehensive about the notion of going to Creighton to play sports, and, um, you know, he's not athletic of a kid, so, you know, the competition scared him. Um, one concern that I have, uh, other than time, other than playing with a larger group, is something I learned, um, I went up to Creighton to the meeting that they had with their school board, with the parents, and it was so nice to go up there and be welcomed as an out-of-Creighton, out-of-town member of the community. Their school board sent letters out to, I don't know if it was just the junior high kids, if it was fifth grade kids. There were parents of fifth grade students there, there were parents of girls that were going into junior high there. They all had received letters, they all had received a reminder phone call about the meeting that was being held that night. When, um, we were there with, I don't know, I never counted thirty or forty other patrons, the school board was, um, very welcoming to comments and input. They had a board up of pros and cons and questions we want answered and ideas and, and honestly, it was very productive, it was very, um, they came up with a lot of ideas of how they could make this work. I was nervous about going up there because we all know we've had bad sporting experiences with Creighton. Um, we play, uh, some of their teams and I wouldn't want my kids on their team sometimes the way the behavior is. But going up there and seeing the parents that were there, I was so impressed that they wanted to provide a sporting opportunity for our kids. It wasn't about what community you were from, it was really welcoming and it was really refreshing, they just, well, someday we might need their help. Um, and so I would, I came away from that meeting going, wow, there are some parents on, you know, who just really want what's best for my son in Plainview. And I think that a lot of, um, uh, fears of this happening could go away if there was just some communication between the board and, um, members of the community. And, um, so as a parent, I would like to see more of that, I don't wanna read about it in the paper, and what I read about in the paper is often what's different than what's said to me, whether it's from administration or a board member or community, the communication's gotta be better throughout this whole process. And, um, the other thing that as a parent, for football, the boys need each other, we need to be with Creighton, for basketball, it's not so much, you know, you only need five players to play, so we'd like you to consider just doing football for the fall season, if that's feasible at all, um, because the less we have to run around and chase after our kids after school, the less they're not gonna be in seventh period class or whatever period and how it all works out, the less they have to not be here, um, the better. The other aspect that Plainview always says is that we don't have the loyalty and the team spirit. We've got team spirit, the junior high boys, the maj- a couple of them, um, have said they would rather play for Plainview and lose by seventy than go up and play with Creighton and win. They wanna play for Plainview Public, so I wanna provide that opportunity as a basketball if we can't do it for football. So I guess I would just ask for more communication, consider just doing football, um, rather than all the sports, maybe just get our feet wet if nothing else, and, um, I guess that's all, thank you.
Thank you. I will, I will tell you that, when we talked about this before, we were talking about it in boys' sports, we would like to do it in all sports probably, we'll have to decide what we wanna do, but our principal called every parent of every boy in our school that has a boy that was gonna be.
No, no, I, I never received a phone call.
In junior high?
Um, Jackson is in eighth grader, I've never spoke to you about this.
There are other parents.
I have answering machine and there's been no, no answer.
I did call these kids and they signed up on this piece of paper and.
You called the kids, but you didn't call the parents?
No, no, I called it and left messages, and I never heard back from several people. Um, I did hear back on Tuesday, um, after our last board meeting, I had two parents call me back and I said by then it was, it was too late.
Is my son's name on there?
He didn't sign up. But I have everything here, I called all of these parents right here, 'cause his name is on this list.
We never received a phone call at our house, so that's why I.
I, I did call.
Well, and you're not the only one, there are other parents that I talked to that said never got a phone call or any communication from me.
And, and who would that be?
Um, Cynthia, um, Peterson, did not, um.
Um, I left a message, she never returned the call.
I'm ju- that's just what, and I, there were at least another one or two, and I.
And I said there were three people that never returned my call.
Okay, I never heard of this.
But this isn't also gonna not just affect the eighth grade, it's also looking at, you know, this is sixth graders. And we were discussing boys early on, I mean, the board was discussing boys early on, and now you're talking about girls, so we just, we need better communication out of you guys. And I, you are representatives, but you can't represent unless you truly know what everybody is thinking.
Well, another thing is we didn't even know Creighton had, was gonna have anything to do with us until Monday you sent the text out.
Well.
After the, when they decided that they would meet with us.
Yes, they.
That was the first time we knew that they were even interested in working with us.
I think here at the meeting, they probably talked about having a special meeting, and Mrs. Peterson contacted me, sent me an email, and then she called me Monday morning, and that's when we decided to do the special meeting.
Right.
The board, the Plainview board, and actually, I had talked to Mrs. Peterson prior to the April meeting about hopefully setting up a special meeting following the April meeting, and then the Creighton board decided that they wanted to have that community meeting first, so our board, no sense in us having a special meeting at that time then.
Well, where was your community meeting, that's all I'm asking. You know, just like with the whole five-school thing, you guys could save so much stress and so much community strife if you would just have an open forum.
We had a.
We had a lot of, lots of. Five-school thing.
We have lots of.
If you weren't there, it was awful.
For the junior high, how many forums have we had for junior high?
Every time we're gonna do anything, we actually need to have an open forum, we have an open forum, we have this meeting right here, where we, where have you guys been all the time?
I'm sorry, I think it's sad that I live in Plainview and I knew about a Creighton meeting that I was welcome to talk to when decisions were being made here that were not being shared with us as parents. And there's obviously, Mrs. Novicki, you thought, you contacted all the parents that you needed to be contacted.
I did what I was instructed to do.
But when parents talk to each other, we find out, we didn't know what it was, whether it's your fault, our fault, or their fault, we all need better communication.
I called parents, they instructed me to call parents, you kids in junior high, I did that.
You didn't call all the junior high parents, Jackson's in junior high.
I left messages with these people and they didn't return the call. I don't know, Paula, I'm sorry, I called, I left messages.
My telephone number is not in the paper, it's in the book, so.
I have, I have everybody's phone number, your power school.
And I never got phone calls back. Somewhere there's a breakdown, whether it's you or us or the board itself, there is a breakdown, it needs to be called, that's all.
We, we're gonna talk about this.
Can I, can I just answer just quickly? Um, we didn't, because when we first talked to Creighton, they didn't want anything to do with us. So until we found out that they wanted to meet with us, so we don't know what they're going to do, we have to go to this meeting first and see now what their plan is before we can even proceed. You know, I guess we could have a committee meeting and said, do you even wanna talk to Creighton? But how crazy is to do that when Creighton didn't even wanna talk to us?
Vicki, I, I guess I would disagree with that, I have an email from the fourth with all of these decisions that were set up about how this was gonna work.
That was discussed, that, there's no decisions being made.
Yeah, that was just a possibility.
Yeah.
There's no decision, there's not even been a post being made.
So when I, when I asked, when I asked last week.
Were you at, were at the meeting?
How are the parents supposed to know what's going on? And I was told, I got this copy of the email, and the email was sent down to you, and you got a copy at the news office, this is exactly what's going on. Those things haven't been decided.
That's been discussed. Brooke, you were told when you contacted last week, that is the email I received from Stephanie Peters from Creighton pertaining to things that Mrs. Peterson, their principal, their A.D., myself, Mrs. Novicki, and Mr. Frederick sit down and talked about, are some possibilities. That was presented to the board at last month's board meeting. You contacted me after that board meeting and wanted to know if you could get a copy of which I sent to you.
Yes, which I have, that's exactly right.
It was discussed at last board meeting.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
So, so, but to say that you don't know what's going on and there wasn't anything besides it, that's, it was right here.
There was not, there was no decision made.
They had their meetings at Creighton after that meeting.
That was a, a discussion between administrative. That, that was put together by super tennis principals and the activity director.
If you were here.
Or if you look at your, your film. To go to the boards to see, as a possible solution, the boards had to act on it, it wasn't a decision that was made. It was to present to them, see if they were willing to do it.
Just a place to see.
Okay.
We had problems with that.
But communicating that to the public was my original effort.
Did you have your tape from last time?
Yeah.
Did you look at it?
Yes, yes, I did.
Not very well, because we discussed that in some detail and disagreed with it. Yeah.
My question is, I mean, here or there, so you're thinking now that there might be for girls as well, are we talking junior high or are we talking all through high school? You're just exploring?
Well, we would like to have a co-op on everything.
Eventually.
Eventually.
Well, you know, I come from Verdegrie and obviously they've been co-op-ing with Nybura, so I'm not against it, because I'm, I'm for whatever it takes so the kids can have the, have all the opportunities, yes. So I'm not against it, I was just wondering if you're gonna, 'cause I think that's how Verdegrie started, was originally with Juice Junior High, and then now they've gone to all theirs. But my question is, I hate for if there's gonna be a surplus number, 'cause like even for volleyball right now, you know, there's quite a few girls that go out, and so I was just wondering how, if you've thought about that, how.
Well, the best scenario that we could have is if we would have an A-team, a B-team, and a C-team, the kids would all get to play more as well.
But right now in volleyball, there was an A, B, and C team.
Right now it is.
Right, but.
Do you have eleven for next year, Paula?
Eleven, uh, all signed up.
Totally.
Seriously, we lost that many?
We're just trying to look at things so that we can have teams and we can be competitive.
Right, well, and I'm not against it, I was just, I just, you know, compared to last year's team, I guess I didn't have this year's numbers, um, you know, that was pretty low.
Some of the things that we want, wanna do, and we're, we have to discuss this tonight. You know, if we don't co-op with somebody, we may be doing six-man football and running all over the state, which if we have to do that, we'll do that. But we're looking at all the possi- we've been looking at, we've talked to Asma, we've talked to Creighton, nobody wanted to do anything with us, and then they decided that they wanna talk to us.
No, they decided.
And we've, how long have we been trying to do this? All year, okay, for a long time.
September.
Well, actually, what are you guys discussing this?
I, all the way back to September.
Prior to the whole, so actually about going on two years, 'cause wasn't it started with golf, about two years ago?
Golf across country.
Before the whole bond issue or the, you know, I'm talking about, five-school merger.
Yeah. Right, we've been working on it for a long time.
Nobody wanted to work with us, so.
That's was the whole issue.
And, you know, if this thing does progress, start out at junior high, progress onto all sports and all levels, we will have public meetings, we aren't just gonna sit here and do nothing. I mean, if people don't wanna do that, you know, they're your kids, we're not gonna force everybody into that.
And, you know, from Verdegrie.
But we gotta have some, we gotta know what the possibilities are before we can have a meeting.
It was a real way to hurt, you know, because Nybura was, when I went to school, oh my gosh, you didn't do anything with Nybura, they were your enemy. You know, so it took a little bit of stigma to get across that, and I think.
For the parents, not for the kids.
No, that's just it, the kids blended a lot better than the parents did.
Right.
And it's not foolproof system, I mean, they still have issues, where is the better field, or, you know, why are we spending more time at this school versus that school? But they have it down, you know, to practices and stuff, they got it figured out.
And we can't answer all the questions on all these things.
Okay.
And we haven't discussed them yet.
If we had a public meeting, we would have no answers, because we don't know what our possibilities are.
So now it went from being possibly just boys to being.
Well, we would like to do that, I don't know if they want, we'd have to talk to them. The, when we had the, the meeting with the administration, then, we were talking specifically of boys, about boys at that time.
Boys junior high.
Boys junior high, yes, that's what we talked about at that meeting, and that's what was brought up to board at the April meeting. Now, what's changed from there, I don't know. And, you know, I, I think some of this, you know, kind of the idea that you gotta go into it, think about it, the idea that both schools at some point are gonna have some needs. They may not be the same year, so they need help and that, but you can't jump in and out of a thing. I think we've had discussions about it, if we get started, we would like, whether we start at junior high and then come up through high school, whatever to do. We, it would be better if you could get it going and then maintain it, rather than say, well, we need to do it this year, we don't need to do it next year. That's, that's not conducive to a good situation for anybody.
Or doable, I'm assuming, because you can't set your schedules up, correct?
Right, it's not even doable. Yeah, the schedules are.
Yeah, football, you can't even change it, every two years is all you can change.
And the class schedule will have to be redesigned.
Junior high, you know, in the, in the high school, the high school level, there are dates you have to contact, the state activities association by and request being able to co-op, junior high, you've got more flexibility, but it's still a matter of putting schedules together, because if, if we're trying to put a football schedule together for next year, a co-op being scheduled, and that means that some, want, either, either Creighton or us, 'cause we both have schedules, one of those schedules isn't gonna happen. So now what do you, what do you do with the teams that you're scheduled to play, I mean, it, it's not an easy thing that way.
Well, besides that, if you're gonna have two teams, now you gotta play bigger schools that can bring two teams, where you're using, we're playing one team of schools.
Oh, you gotta play eleven. Oh, you gotta find some teams to play eleven of them, it gets really complicated.
So your next step is you're meeting now with Creighton, when, when did you say?
What's the next step?
When did you say?
And come to the meeting, it's open, I mean, you can't, like I said, you can't speak, but you can listen, and then you can come back here and speak next month.
So when is the decision actually made then?
When we come to an agreement.
Or you have more information, you know what they're talking about.
Yes. Because we don't know what they expect, I mean, do they want everything up there? 'Cause that's the public.
I was at the meeting, can I share that with you? Do you wanna know what they're thinking, 'cause I was there.
Yeah.
Communication is so easy if you just allow people to talk. They were so welcoming, they are willing to split sports practices fifty-fifty, even though they have twice as many kids as we do. They're willing to buy more of the jerseys, because if they, every town could buy their jerseys for their own kids, the A.D.'s talked about this. They're willing to give more than I think they should even have to give, they were wonderful. They're willing to pay for more jerseys, they're willing to split the practice time fifty-fifty, both locations, even though they could bring in two vans down here to our, one van there. The board was wonderful, the parents present were wonderful.
Well, we'll just have to see.
So when you guys keep talking about that, you know, we don't want, I, they, they're very positive.
Yeah, we'll just have to see, we'll see.
But you also gotta remember that we're on different curves, we're on the low, gonna head back up, they're on the high and are gonna head down, so they know in a couple of years.
And they're looking, and that was talked about, they wondered about, should we do a contract, and then, you know, different things like that, and they're coming into this going just on, um, you know, if we're good to them now, then hopefully they'll be good to us down the road. And that's, it was a great community atmosphere on both sides of the table.
Okay. Any other public comments?
I, my, uh, one more question, but if this happened, as far as, um, transportation, is this on parents' time or school? I mean, get, if we did it hypothetically, if we did it, would it be the kids being bused over there or the parents having?
No, we will take your, all, all of the busing back and forth, but you'll have to pick the kids up here later, obviously.
If it is true. Okay.
Once they bus back here. They won't be, they won't be on us, they won't be on the bus, probably.
And later, later is after-school hours, sure.
After-school, yes.
That was kinda my question, is it said that they're gonna do practices after school, or is it set in stone that we're gonna take out, for instance, band or another class?
Taking out band, no one has said anything about taking out.
Because, you know, we've gotta pick something, obviously, if you're leaving, at the end of the day.
Something's come out, something has been there.
Yeah, she, yeah, she.
We've had football the last period for ever, and so we'll work around that, we'll have to get kids up to Creighton, or they'll have to get kids here.
'Cause I've always had runs after school, so I don't, I guess understand why you have to cut out class.
Have to go longer after school to do it, then they can do that, we can work that out, we're not planning on getting any music, not at all, we just have to figure those schedules out.
Well, I was just wondering why it has to be during school day, I mean, growing up, I've always had practice after school.
Maybe, maybe, we, we, well, how at after-school, the only trouble we have with that is facilities and all those kind of things, but we have been having it during the school day for, forever.
Well, and that was because we didn't wanna not give everybody the chance to come, 'cause some kids that live out in the country have no other way to get home, so that's why we had it during the school period, so that they had a chance to participate and still have a way home wherever they did.
So now, though, they will have to have parents come take them home anyway?
'Cause it'll be too late, the buses will already be gone.
But that's what I'm saying, so maybe you don't have to cut into the seventh period as much, as long as you gotta come after them.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Personally, I, you know, Jake's a seventh grader, or ninth grader, so he's not involved with this, but I think his class this year lost four more students out of it. Uh, throughout the course, you know, there's not a lot of athletes left. The best way to maybe start to look with joining a school may very well be through starting with junior high athletics.
Absolutely.
So that we all get to know each other.
Yeah.
I don't see any large factories opening or anything going to bring more jobs to the area, to which increases either of our school districts. So I, I, I think it's a good deal.
And athletics, one of the best things you can have on a team is some competition, and if you don't have any competition, you just have enough kids to barely make the team, and then somebody gets hurt.
I watched the junior high kid third, last year trying to practice football, I think there was eleven?
Um, we had it with eight, seven.
Eight by the end of the year?
Seven, seven, could get canceled games.
You can't scrimmage, you can't develop any kind of continuity, I've been coaching soccer for a long time, and I'm always catching a couple Creighton kids come down, or I've had kids come over from Orchard times, and those kids don't know where they're from or who they're from, and, and to bring them together and get them to work as a team rather than individuals, boy, when they start seeing that team work, they, they come together pretty well. So I, I really think that maybe if you didn't have to cut the seventh period out, because they're gonna miss the bus going home anyway. But, you know, 'cause I agree with Mrs. Kraus, the, the music is pretty important too.
That was never discussed, cutting music, ever.
Well, I, I just.
It's just a, just a better plan you were gonna transport them.
But we can, things is needed.
Well, right now, they take something all periods, so somebody's gonna get cut.
Well, last period had always been for sports.
We're gonna have to make more time, so it's probably gonna be after school. It's not gonna, it's not gonna, we're not gonna cut anything else that they, they have. First of all, music is a class, and football's an extracurricular activity, and so the music should have priority over the extracurricular, so. At least that's my view.
Any other discussion?
I guess my, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
My concerns are just what's gonna get cut out of the schedule to make for transportation time. Um, Teagan's an eighth grader, he loves to go to Advantage after school to get his work done, he will be an eighth grader, to get his work done, and that will take away his time to go to Advantage, he chooses to go, he doesn't have to, he chooses to to get his work done, so that's gonna take away work time for him. Um, and we do, it's easier for us to get here, we pick him up from Advantage, but that's an easier time than trying to pick up, pick up kids earlier than that, like if it would be four o'clock or something, and I know that's not just my concern, there are other kids that live in the country that would have transportation issues. Um, and I agree with Sally Joe, when we were in Creighton, they were very welcoming, that was refreshing, I was a little nervous about how that was gonna go, it was great, they're more than willing to work with us, and I ju- I guess I would rather see them, see Teagan, he loves to play the game, he doesn't care who he's gonna be playing with, I would rather see him playing six-man if that's our other option, so that he gets to play, um, as opposed to practicing and then not getting very much playtime. 'Cause to, to me and my husband, it's not about winning, it's just about playing the game, learning sportsmanship and growing as a person. So those, those are our main concerns, so.
You just took care of one of them, we just said we're not gonna take time away from music to have football.
Well, I guess not just music, I mean, bec- the reason I think this keeps getting.
Well, when you offer an extracurricular activity, every time you do that, you have to make choices. And so, if I'm gonna be able to go to Advantage, you're gonna be in football after school. Unless we have Advantage before school, I don't know if we're gonna have, there's always choices on all these things, extracurricular always brings in lots more choices.
One other, one thing we talked about when Mr. Alt and myself and Cory met with the Creighton people, we were looking at like a four fifteen return time, but the kids practice until about four o'clock, and again, these were just things that we had talked about, I don't know that they're set in stone, but the advantage to that is they get more than twenty, I mean, literally, if you watch, they get about, well, Eric, how long did you practice junior? I realize it's a long time ago, but, um, they might get twenty-five minutes of legitimate practice time. So we had talked about maybe extending that until four o'clock, because no varsity team is ready to go by four o'clock. No basketball team is ready to go, we don't get out of school till twenty till, they can stretch on the sidelines, and that would give those kids an advantage. And so if Teagan wants to come to Advantage. And so, if Teagan wants to come to Advantage, you know, they show up, if they're in Advantage, they're gonna be required to be.
Right.
Which is our policy, but if he wanted to come and finish, you know, even a half hour every day, that would be open to them, we're not gonna tell kids, if you're not here at the beginning, you can't come. Because this is voluntary, obviously, for him.
You have to understand, too, that it's hard for coaches, when you have eight kids out, how do you teach them the game of football? When you don't have everybody play on both sides of the ball, so they're at a disadvantage there, too, and as a coach, that's hard.
Sure.
If we're at the point where we're playing six man for two years, and then we've got enough kids, we're back to eight man for two years, and then maybe you go to eleven man, then you're back to eight man. You know, how do you bring, how do you coach the junior high kids not knowing what they're gonna be when they're varsity?
That's the way it was when my, when Tate was in junior high, too, they practiced at a different level than the, and there were even other teams that, what did we play when they were?
Laurel, Laurel was eleven man and everybody else was eight man.
Yeah, and they would, you know, the game got adjusted to match up with our opponent, so it worked out, but.
You know, another little thing that falls into this at the day that we met with the Creighton people is, you gotta take a look at coaches. You may have a junior high coach that also coaches high school, so then you're gonna have to take a look, how are we gonna work around that, or you're gonna have to work to find different coaches and that type of things. There's, you know, just a lot of questions out there.
And Creighton parents are, they have the same questions and concerns we do, they're on the same page, so.
I think part of the reason that they're, that they did that is because they had a lot of parents, we had been talking about this, and I know that Steve and other people have been talking, the parents at Creighton, we know a lot of people there. And I think the parents went to their board and said, Plainview wants to do something, let's talk about it, and I think, would you say?
So we're.
I, just a personal note, my son doesn't go to Plainview public just yet, will next year, so can he get on whatever list to be contacted on any further? I mean, you, you mentioned earlier that you contacted all these kids, can.
But, and, and I, and I do apologize, I did not call you, I talked to you down at, at Warren's.
Yes, yeah, after, yeah.
I kinda forgot about that.
Yeah, and that's okay, I just, I understand, I'm not in your system.
But when I see you in the hallway, I try to mention to him what's going on, like move update is tomorrow.
Uh-huh. You gotta remember, he's a boy.
And, I have conversations with that. Tells me nothing, um, but, but did you get the letter for move update?
I did get that, yeah.
So I think you're in the computer, so he gets that information.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, so if I can be informed of any other activity that is going on in the junior high world would be one.
One of, back to the soccer deal, when I first started coach, coaching, it was AYSO, and the rules were that if you showed up for practices, you got to play two quarters. Period, so that made as a coach, you had to blend your people very uniquely to keep them competitive. But once the other kids realized that Joe maybe isn't quite as good, but he's gonna be out there, they started working with him as a group and made them better. So there's still a very good chance, if you get the right coach in the junior high, everybody's still gonna get to play about the equal amount.
One thing that was brought up at the parent meeting was possibly since these schedules have already been in place for both Creighton and Plainview next year, why not send one team, like to Creighton's schedule, and then another team to the Plainview's schedule? So instead of taking all these boys and having, you know, in essence, you'd be taking some Creighton kids, mixing with Plainview kids, and sending them with a coach one direction.
So like an A and B thing?
Yeah, but it wouldn't have to be A and B, not necessarily skill up, but take some boys in.
Right.
All of, all those things have to be discussed.
But, I mean, just all those good things come out of the meetings, I don't, I don't think you guys always have to have, well, we don't know what we're gonna do, we don't know if it's accepted, just, let's frame.
We're gonna have meetings.
It, it's already kinda late for this process, so, I want it sooner, that's all I'm asking for.
That's, that's what we're talking about right now. We wanted to, we wanted, we wanted to do this two years ago, so we're frustrated more than you are, because we've been trying to do this forever.
How many, many meetings would it come to, if we had a meeting every four months and never do anything?
If I could talk at a mic, I would come to every single one.
Well, the last ones that we were at, it was Creighton doesn't wanna do anything with us, so, you know, I thought it was a done deal, and then all of a sudden we're back.
That's the reason.
But there, again, that's because the board told us no, but then the parents had went to the board and said, let's talk to them, so then that got the board, that's why they wanted to have a community meeting, to see what the parents thought.
Because I do, I remember being at that meeting when you guys said, we, we talked to them, and nobody, you talked to both Osman and you talked to Creighton, and nobody wanted to do something.
Yes.
That was about two months, I mean, maybe in January, February.
Yeah, that one, yeah. That was our second or third go around of approaching them.
So, yes.
Yes, thank you.
I don't think anyone initially wants to admit that their school's populations are getting so small that you have to start thinking of this. So first, you gotta plant the seed.
We went through it first, and we, we can feel like, okay, you know, nobody really wants to do anything with us, okay, so what are they gonna do when, when they want help?
But that's what I'm, you gotta kind of plant the seed.
And that's what I keep saying to them, if you want help from us later, you better, you better come talk to us now.
And that's one thing we have to realize, too, if we do this with them for a couple of years, and then we start having a bunch of numbers, you know, don't come in here and say, we wanna split up, because we don't wanna go up there, we don't want the travel time, we got enough for our own, we don't wanna do this, you know, you can't go down that road.
And they have faith in us that we're not gonna do that.
And who's to say that Osman isn't gonna hear about this now and want us?
And that's one of my concerns, too.
They have their chance, they have their chance.
Creighton said, if we don't join them and Osman wants to, then we may lose our opportunity to join with those, yeah, because they're.
Well, everyone do. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go on, thank you. Discussion item, review board policy seven oh two point oh one fiscal year.
Good, it's okay, Bob, I believe that will really just make Thomas, or maybe Reddick, I don't have any recommend changes to these, it's pretty much follow state statutes concerning financials, so.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, seven oh two point oh one on the fiscal year, that's pretty cut and dry, runs from September one to August three.
Okay.
Seven oh two point oh two on the budget planning, preparation and schedules, uh, we pretty much follow this, we talk about revenues and expenditures for each fund, it'd be like your, your student pre-fund, your general fund, your lunch fund, all of those, all that stuff, it's put together, they're presented to the board, and then we have the hearing feeling those. Uh, and we talk about the levies, uh, what it's gonna do to the levy of the general fund and the levy fund. And usually, you know, the stuff I hand out to the board, we usually have to prepare some at least a lot, but I've been trying to do it back three, back three years previous, to kind of see trends of what's happening in the different funds in different areas, so. Uh, we are, we are doing pretty much everything it talks about, if you're, like I said, has to be to the state auditor or county auditor by September twentieth, which that's state law, we gotta do that. Uh, seven oh two point oh three, the budget adoption process, uh, we follow this, we have to put it in advertising in the newspaper, uh, then we have the public hearing, which you're well aware of. And, um, you know, the public has an opportunity to talk to the public hearing, and then the board acts on it in a separate meeting. Uh, seven oh four point oh one, deposits and transfers, uh, you know, we have official depository, in our case, depositories, we have the, the three banks, the two here and the one in Brunswick. Um, they're designated as that, uh, transfer of funds, we can, we do have the possibility of transferring funds from one account to another one, an example would be like, last year, we transferred money from the general fund into depreciation fund, but that has to go through the board for board approvals. Uh, the financial records, it talks about the different accounts, if you look, seven, seven oh four point oh two on the financial records, uh, you know, there are certain regulations in that, procedures you have to follow with the accounting in that. Uh, it lists all of the possible funds you have there, uh, we do not, are not currently utilizing all of those funds, uh, we don't use the contingency fund, the bond fund, we don't have any bonds right now, or the qualified, qualified capital purchase or the cooperative fund, the others we do currently utilize. And those, you know, all talked about in the budget hearing in that. Uh, seven oh four point oh four on the audits, um, we're required by state statute to have an audit, uh, this is usually done in October, if it is one of these.
End of September, October.
End of September, October, uh, has to be in by November fifth, the state, uh, gets sent in, and, uh, and then we do, we also designate our auditor, we've been very, very happy with that, so. So I don't have any suggest changes unless you, you found something on those, uh, things that mostly is pretty much state statutes.
Okay. Number ten, we've been already doing for some time, you know, so that's collaborative sponsorships with neighboring districts.
I think we should have a public meeting after this Wednesday.
Yes, well, well, hopefully we'll learn some things Wednesday.
Yes.
And all those things that were, we talked about last week, were things that were talked about with, with, uh, with the athletic directors and with the superintendents and with the principals. And I disagreed with some of the things that you were saying, so we did not make a decision on that, that was gonna be the way it went, but, uh, it was a start. But there was, there's been no decision, you know, I was, would everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I think one of you guys mentioned something about what you read in the paper, what I read in there, it's made a statement that all sports were gonna be done at Creighton, is the way I took that. And that's not what we talked about at all. And I don't think we would ever allow that.
Well, we talked about in that meeting that day with the, the junior high boys, we did talk about doing the wrestling over there, because of the way they have, they put their practice, what they do with their kids. They got twenty, because they got all their, all their boys involved, they have like twenty some kids, but we may only have three, it doesn't make a lot of sense for them to bring twenty some kids over here to wrestle with our three, where we can just put them in a van over there, but, other than that, we were looking at sharing. Now, and, and I appreciate your comments about that, you know, their discussion, the board, maybe some of that's even changed what they're thinking on that, which would be, because we did, we did approach them during that meeting that we would like to see it a, a true cooperative, where we're, we're sharing, everybody, you know, basically, we're splitting everything pretty much right down the middle, and, you know, realizing that that's not probably a hundred percent possible, but that's kind of the goal, where you wanna, everybody gives and everybody gets, out of it, so.
Yeah, I don't, Kian and I had an argument with that wrestling thing, because true cooperative is what I'm interested in.
Yeah.
Because, because if you do that, then pretty soon they're gonna be saying, well, we have more kids out for football than you, so we're gonna have it all over here, so it needs to be, if you're gonna do it, it needs to be splitting it. You don't worry about the numbers or any of that kinda stuff, you decide that, that's what we're gonna dedicate ourselves to doing, and that's the way we look at it.
Well, and, and I can tell you that there was, that's happening right now in Clearwater. They had agreements made, and now one of them, I don't know which one, doesn't matter, is, yeah, they're going back on what they said, and so it's just a big ugly fight.
Everything was supposed to end up at Clearwater after two years, Orchard doesn't wanna give that great.
And now Elgin wants in, and Niobrara's with them, and.
Ewing, Ewing's.
Well, Niobrara's also.
No, but they're looking at going with.
Not sports wise, but they share principal or superintendent.
Well, they have unification.
They have principals at one of the states.
Yeah, there's, there's two different things to, to talk about, it was the unification, and I think they have some issues with what they're doing educational wise, where they're educating students, I think that was on a rotation basis. The cooperative part of that i- is really different, because you can set up a cooperative agreement, that's only good for two years, and then those can be, can be changed at the end of two years.
But, uh, unification is for five years?
I think a five years originally, yes.
And you, you have a common tax over all those districts, so the tax rate's the same on all of them, um, there's a lot of things that are.
Invertery's part of that.
Were, and were originally dealing with one in that, but they didn't wanna get in, because they had a good football team one year, or, so they didn't wanna get in, and then they, and then they would let in, which I understand, so. So anyway, we, we will try and find out some things and then communicate with everybody, uh, what happens in our next meeting. Okay, any other discussion on that one?
I just wanna point out that it will be trial and error the first, I mean, this is not going to be perfect, if you've ever been a part of this, it's not perfect, you decide that we're gonna do this one week and, and then went, wow, this is way too confusing, way too difficult, where are my kids, I don't know who's supposed to be where. And as you go, you kinda start tweaking things and trying to figure out what you're going to do, and those are mostly done, I will tell you, probably by your A.D.'s, they will kinda make that known, and they go to your administration and say, this isn't working, you don't bring that stuff all the way back to the board every single time to make every little decision, like, are we going to go two weeks in one spot and two weeks in one spot, or every other week, or, because we tried every day, but that was not good. Yeah, that was dumb, just blink out.
We make the decision whether, whether you're gonna do it or not, you make the, the really, we're not gonna make the ridiculous decision, it does not work out.
If we get positive feedback on Wednesday, too, I mean, this is gonna have to move pretty fast, because in order to get all our schedules realigned for next year, so, I mean, these meetings are gonna come, if it's gonna keep moving, it's gonna come pretty fast, so.
If it does come back, then you guys are gonna have to come back and have a special meeting pretty much yet this month to say that, yes, you're for it, or no, you're not, right, decide.
I, I don't know how we can do it this long, maybe we can't, I don't know.
You know, I, I was gonna make the comment, depending how the discussion goes Wednesday night, it might be a possibility, you say, let's work and get it set up for next year. I mean, that might be the option, because.
Just for the junior high?
Mr. Frederick, scheduling is not fun, is it? And you already have schedules for next year, and those things, it'd be tough to deal with, but, uh, could we, maybe, but, you know, that's all gonna have to be a part of the discussions. I, I would just hope, and I won't be here next year, but I would hope if, you know, if this is something you wanna see happen, then, you know, that would be at least one way to get into it down the road. Keep it all in mind, right?
So then our options for football for this coming year would probably be.
Survive.
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 You're talking high school?
No, junior high.
Junior high.
Both.
High school would be fine.
Well, I guess, you know, I was kinda lost for a minute, if we were talking about everybody cooperating or just.
So if you don't get anything done for next year, junior high might be at a deal where, if they wanna play football, they might have to go to Creighton, just because they don't have enough kids. If they don't get anything co-op for next year, what are our other options?
Just do like temporary.
The only thing could be is if we had two teams, we play the Plainview schedule and Creighton's schedule, mix up the kids.
Yeah.
Which would be kind of a nice.
And then change the schedule.
Yeah. And, and I'm kinda concerned about basketball, we have six kids signed up for basketball.
For bowl grades?
Yeah. We have a couple injuries and we don't have a basketball team anymore.
Off the practice with six.
Yeah, you can't even.
Well, I said it, but wants a question.
But still, it's tough to practice.
It is, very tough.
I think that's the doubt.
I think the volleyball team aren't gonna have enough to put two teams out. Unless you have some in the day.
Is the board unsure then if it's actually gonna happen for next year, is that what I'm hearing, or?
We don't know that it will.
Yeah, that's what he's asking, we don't know.
But there's a discussion that happens on Wednesday, you say they wanna do it, I mean, you guys don't, you're not sure about what the drop date could be for actually going through with it or not?
Well, the holdups probably gonna be the scheduling, I mean, we can make it happen between the two schools, if we can find the teams that'll play us, you know.
I'm just wondering if there's like a date or something like that, or if it's just like, well, we can't decide by this date, we can't do it next year, but doesn't seem like, for sure that's.
That's something we can talk about Wednesday and see.
Well, I mean, you'd be able to figure that out ahead of time, wouldn't you?
In high school you would, but junior high is a little different.
How many, how many football games do you guys have for now? Right now, I got about four, I can have up to six. Four, are they like on Tuesdays or Thursdays?
Mondays.
Mondays. When does Creighton's, of course, you probably don't know that. But you know, they may end up to eight total games and divide the kids up enough to play, because. Even, even if we end up having to play our own schedule and they play their schedule, putting them together just for practice might be.
Yeah, but you gotta watch how many games kids can play in.
No, no, but I mean, just putting them together to practice, and then the Plainview kids go play their games and then, to Creighton.
It's just something to think about, I think, is, if we can't decide by this point in time, we can't do it. I know I have to let you schedule, and it's not a simple thing to answer, but it should be thought about at least.
Well, yeah, like, you know, the two teams, I, you can go, you can keep your schedules, you get enough for double your teams, and then you can extend, you can extend your time to get it together. Yeah, two equal teams, not an A and a B, but, so you, because otherwise your other schools are gonna be upset if you send a B team to play against their best team, and they just, you know.
And it might be a way to work that first year of headaches out, you know, just keeping, like you said, keeping it so there'd be two teams, and yet you get.
I know, watching those two, last year practice, they wanted to have a.
Okay, let's go on, approve of first and second reading, changes to the board policy, six eleven point oh two, student promotion retention or acceleration.
Okay, we brought this, uh, policy up for review and, and decided we needed to change in the last paragraph on the first page there, I think it originally said, uh, only as a last resort, only with the best education. Only as a last resort, only when the best educational interests of the students are considered to the students. If you need a grade during the primary years one through three, we decided we want to change educated. So I did make that change.
I'll make a motion to approve on first and second reading changes to board policies six eleven point oh two.
Second.
Second. All right, move to second. Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
My mic, yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Steve, yes. Motion carries.
Approve on first and second reading changes to board policy six eleven point oh three.
Okay, this one, the discussion we reviewed was about primarily came down to evaluatory and salutary and how many years, um, students would need to be in attendance at Plainview. The board asked to put four semesters in there, which I did. Other honors probably wouldn't make so much difference. Those, the second time on.
Make, make a motion to approve on first and second reading changes to board policy six eleven point oh three, student honors and fourths.
Okay, approved. Uh, motion rating second. Y'all do?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Uh, discuss and approve on first reading board policy four thirteen point oh three five, non certified employees for healthcare act. I'd like to turn this over to Imae Jean.
But she doesn't want it.
It's, it's been kind of complicated. We had Matt Wood, the classified staff, I think you talked a little bit about this last month, that according to the Affordable Healthcare Act, we're going to have to offer insurance to some of our classified staff. Thought I had a pretty good grasp of this. I think it was the day after the last board meeting, Sue Warner, who is our representative, Blue Cross Blue Shield, just happened to stop in. So Imae Jean and I were visiting what they're, and Sue expressed a concern about. And she used an example of a staff member in North Flat Creek Schools, a classified staff member who is currently taking. Family insurance through the marketplace exchange. Well, their district offered them single coverage as part of the Affordable Healthcare. The gentleman lost his subsidy he had for his family insurance and it ended up costing him a bunch of money. So we started rethinking about maybe what we wanted to do. So we visited with the staff again about it. And then last Wednesday, I went to Lincoln and visited with Rex Schultz about it, uh, to see kind of where we stood. And he come up with this policy as something that's being used at. Other schools or different schools. Uh, it basically would allow us to offer insurance and hopefully not end up hurting anybody. In that policy, really the important part is just the second page, the number five. You're gonna read that, read through that, try to understand it. I'm gonna try to somewhat explain what's happening with this. Even with this policy, we technically will not be offering Affordable Healthcare. Because we are not offering the required amount of money to make it affordable. Now, in doing so, we have to recognize that therefore we are going to end up paying penalties to the government. That penalty is gonna be around three thousand dollars staffing. That goes on the market to get their insurance. Now, when we talk to our staff about who would be interested in it, who's got other types of insurance, whether it is Medicare or whether it is other insurance they have, not, but not getting through the, uh, marketplace. We're at about a breaking point in what we pay in penalties and what we would pay in insurance premiums. So the question then became, do we want to just point blank offer insurance and say, here you go, and then jeopardize somebody that's already getting subsidized with some type of insurance? Or do we just want to go and say, we're gonna offer some money. It's not affordable. We understand that. Are the, the staff members will have the, the option to take the money that's offered if they want to buy school insurance. If they don't want to buy school insurance, they don't have to. If they want to go on the exchange and get their insurance, they can do that. That would be their choice. But we are gonna have to pay a penalty if they, if they do that.
So if they take the insurance, but we're still not offering enough, do we pay the penalty and the insurance?
They, they will have to decide, are they going to take our insurance? If they're taking our insurance, then they're not gonna go on, not get insurance on the exchange.
We would only be penalized for people who decide not to take it, but go on the exchange and buy it if it were, yeah. If they're.
Are we knowing that this one is gonna be a three thousand dollar fine?
Well, we're.
The penalty?
That's what the penalty is. It's gonna be three thousand dollars.
Doesn't have a range of?
It's just a three thousand dollar penalty if I understand you correctly.
It can't be more than that.
Per person that would have qualified for it if you didn't offer it or, or would have taken it, gone on the exchange. That would, I said, we have people that have insurance other places. It's not going to affect them.
Basically, we have, we have one person.
Well, we, we're looking at probably four, maybe five people out there be, on the exchange or considering going to the exchange to get their insurance. That is fifty thousand dollars. If we offer insurance and they ended up taking it, it's gonna cost us about the same amount of money.
So does that penalty get back to those people then to help them?
We just pay the government.
It just goes to people again, is what it amounts to. Well, I would, if there was a way, I would rather get the money to the people than to the government.
I would too, but you can't just offer cash and leave. That causes you more problems with it.
So do you have anybody that is being, I suppose you can't legally answer, ask that question. Do you have anybody that's having subsidies now that's gonna be affected by this?
Yes.
And that's why, that's why Mr. Alt went to visit with Perry Law Firm again, because yes, we had one person who said that if.
I didn't know if you could ask him that or not.
We did.
They, they didn't, we told them they didn't have to answer.
Well, they told me they didn't have to tell us, but they told us.
But we, go ahead, Imae Jean.
Well, yes, and this person said, if, if you offer me insurance, I will have to quit because I could not afford to give up those subsidies for my family. So that's why we went looking for something else, because we thought we don't want to hurt somebody too. You know, you think you're doing this to help people and here we were gonna hurt somebody.
So there's no way that we can pay them enough so to make up the difference for the subsidies?
Well, it'll be, with this policy, from what we understand, from what our law firm told us, they will not be losing their subsidies.
Right. But they also won't be getting the three thousand dollars. That's what we're talking about.
Right, exactly.
They won't lose their subsidy.
Although that person, I suppose, could take the single insurance and their family could still keep their subsidy. You know, it, it's, it's a real.
So basically, what's wrong with this is the government needs to change how the subsidy comes out.
You know, go back to your question, Bob. You know, the board could say, well, we're gonna provide insurance to all of you. But you don't need to do that. And that would be pretty expensive to do that. And this is kind of an approach where we know we're not gonna meet what the law says we should be doing, provide Affordable Healthcare. We realize we're gonna have to pay a penalty, but that penalty is gonna be, it's not gonna hurt the district.
I know, but I don't like the idea.
I know, I know.
If we, if we went into the discussion with, with the staff members with that idea in mind, Bob.
We thought, yeah, we thought we were gonna do a good thing and offer. And then we realized, then we're gonna be hurting.
So is the staff okay with us just paying the penalty or is that bothering them?
We haven't gone back to them and talked to this. What I, what I was gonna have the board to do is approve this on first reading tonight because we have to have this done so that we can form our subgroup, Blue Cross Blue Shield, by the end of.
July first is the absolute deadline.
By July first. So we would need a second reading next month. And we'll talk to the staff, see what they think, and then we'd come back next month if we, if there's anything and then we feel need to change from the second reading. You know, one of the things Rex told us is says, you could, you could go to this, this subgroup, you could say, what, what do you, what do you want for insurance? You want nine hundred deductible, you want fifteen hundred dollar deductible, you want four thousand dollar deductible, what, what do you want? And let that choose. But if the district offers the way this is written, it, it would cost the district the same amount of money. I mean, no matter what, which one of those plans they go, you would go on. And if they wanted family insurance, it's just a single insurance, which you only have to offer single insurance, uh, they would have that option to take that. As a matter of fact, if we offer, let's say, fifteen hundred dollar deductible, they could take either single or family. It's just the district is only gonna pay three hundred dollars a month for the nine months that work. And then they're responsible for whatever the rest of it.
And they could pay up to a five hundred dollar deductible. If they wanted that, they could pay the difference.
But what we're looking at within this group, I, I'm pretty comfortable in saying we need to come up with one plan, just like the teachers are on right now, the nine hundred dollar deductible. This group needs to come up, we need to come up with a deductible for this group. What is it gonna be? We can't say one is gonna do nine hundred, one's gonna do four thousand, one's fifteen hundred. We're not gonna go there, so.
That's too bad. You can't throw them into the other group. So really, the, with this plan, it doesn't, it doesn't increase getting somebody on, on healthcare?
There were several people who said, yes, they will definitely take it, you know, I'd be, that's, that, saying that, yes, before they knew exactly what it was going to be. But they were pretty sure, you know, they would take.
So it's gonna cost us three hundred dollars a month, that's what you're saying for our employee?
For nine months, for the nine months they work. See, these people only work nine months.
I know, but for our teacher employees, uh, full family, what are we paying them on that? Fifteen hundred?
Uh, between eleven and twelve hundred a month.
On, on full family?
I think so.
It's over sixteen, it's almost sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars a year in the next year for family.
Yeah, I get that.
It's more than that.
I think, I think that's what.
Twelve hundred dollars a month about.
I haven't looked at that yet.
So is there other schools that are doing this?
Well, what Rex told us the other day, he's got several schools doing this. He got schools doing different things, but this is one thing that he has come up with, you know, that was workable for our situation. And other schools are doing this.
So basically, we could spend three thousand dollars per employee, spend that money and they get no benefit and we just get the bill. Possibly.
Possibly.
They will, they will have insurance, but they will be paying for part of it. But they will, if they take the policy, they will get the free.
If they take it, but if they don't take it, then they get nothing else?
Yes, that's right. That's correct.
So wait, wait. That's, that's, that's kind of a way as we're gonna have to pay your insurance. And if you decide not to take it, you don't get the benefit.
Right, right.
Except that teachers are giving all their insurance, we're not providing it.
But again, you must realize the difference between nine month and twelve month employees.
I understand that.
But I, I know what you're saying, yeah.
We did play with the numbers a little bit. You know, like either fifteen hundred dollar plan or four thousand dollar plan. Like with the fifteen, fifteen hundred dollar deductible plan. When you figure out what that's gonna cost over twelve months and then bring it back to paying for it in nine months, it'd cost the employees about four hundred and thirty dollars a month. Now, if you do the four thousand dollar deductible, then it goes down to about two ninety-eight a month. They would be responsible for it. And I think like Rex said, if, if you look at it in that perspective, what it's costing them. That's not too bad for that type of insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance, you know, fifteen hundred dollar deductible, even a four thousand dollar deductible. I, I'm not an insurance person, but, you know, when I look at the, I look at the rates, the. The, uh. Four thousand dollar plan is four hundred and twen, well, four hundred and, four hundred and forty, almost four hundred and fifty dollars a month. So they're, they would be getting up to three hundred, so a hundred and fifty dollars cheaper. And Blue Cross Blue Shield is pretty good insurance.
So they have insurance over the full twelve months. We would pro-rates, we pay.
Well, we would, we would deduct twelve months insurance out of nine months wages. And they, I mean, they'll have to understand that. And we talked to them about that when, when we visited.
So how much would the family cost?
I didn't go there.
I did. Well, the four thousand dollar deductible, the family is, get on the right line here, almost twelve hundred dollars a month.
And realize that a lot of these people don't make that.
Right.
And I, but I know some people that have jobs that they just hope to pay for their insurance for their job.
Exactly, exactly. That's becoming more common than, yeah.
It's a second income person in there.
Question earlier about the nine hundred dollar deductible, it's, when you put the, the single of dental on it, it's about sixteen hundred dollars a month. So at any rate, that's kind of what we've come up with for now. Uh, to me, it's, seemed like it's workable. Uh, like I said, I went and talked to Rex on Wednesday. I come back. Talked to Imae Jean on Thursday and totally confused her and she confused me more. And we talked about it again this morning and we decided that we would call Rex again and talk to him on the speakerphone and I'm still confused, but.
Well, the thing is, is these requirements can change every year too.
Exactly.
Yeah, you would hope that they tweak some of these things. If they ever get together and start working together on anything.
Too many people, too many different things. That's very tough to do.
So you want first, first approval, yes?
First, first.
Yeah, impossible.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve on first reading board policy four one three dash, uh, point oh three five, non certified employees Affordable Healthcare.
Second. Okay.
Who, second is?
Thank you.
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mike, maybe?
Yes. You can't, you can't maybe?
Okay, fifteen, approve replacing North Door as a non mentioned building.
Missed one.
Did I skip one? Oh, sorry.
Discuss approve handbook changes for two thousand sixteen seventeen.
This is no thank you, this is probably.
Uh, we had talked about this a little bit last month. Um, with the changes in the way the law is now stating, uh, any kid that's in our building that's eighteen years old, we cannot see their. Records and they don't all have to take math for dual credit. Um.
You're talking about college kids that are taking it?
Our high school kids are taking it for college credit. So I think we need to do away with our dual conversion chart because it doesn't apply to all of our students any longer because of the way they've written it. Um, uh, we'll just use, Carter's taking math right now for college credits. He doesn't have to share that information with me because he's got his three math classes that he already needs.
So.
And so some of those kids might, some of them might not, but they don't have to share that information if they don't want to.
So when you're figuring grade point stuff and his, whatever his grade is in Plainview, what you write down, you don't do a conversion?
Yep, there would be no conversion. And he doesn't have to tell us if he wants to.
There's no floating GPA for that, is it?
No.
So is that grade comes from the college to him?
Not from the school for that class?
For both. If he chooses to take it for high school credit as well.
From some of those classes.
And some of them do not take it for high school credit because they don't have to.
College credit, like one point two or something like that?
Yeah, we just, they get twelve credits for those.
Instead of ten?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. I knew there was a way that.
And, and he, because he would have Algebra One as an eighth grader, he'd have Geometry and Algebra Two. So he could technically be done with his classes as a sophomore for his high school requirements. So if he doesn't want to share that information with us, that's fine. So it doesn't hurt his high school GPA, but then that, college gets it regardless. And then if it's not good enough for them, you know, he has to retake it. It, it hasn't been a huge issue, but if we start to expand where Dean is teaching at distance learning, it could have an impact.
Okay, so that's the only change, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't really know. There's too much else.
That sounds reasonable.
Should have that class, get all the water bottle stuff straightened out and all that that they want to change.
Me, yeah.
You said you were.
Oh, that was really funny.
That would pertain to the handbook.
One of the few times I haven't thought about it ever since I started doing the superintendent stuff.
I wouldn't talk to them. They were.
Thank you.
It was kind of comical. I said, if you're gonna send these things, you can't have typos in it. You have to make sure, because some of them, you don't even know the policy as it's written. Oh, yeah, probably should have that up. Yes, yes, you should.
Thank you. Okay, we want to approve that.
Make a motion to approve the handbook changes for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seconds. Will you be able to present the table?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, second. Myself, yes, Mike?
Myself, yes, Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now approve replacing north doors in elementary building.
This is one of the things that the board mentioned, we were walking around at the time, feeling, I apologize for not hitting out sooner. If you, you look at the, the polls from last edge, I did sign it the other day, and I talked to Gail, I said, maybe you better call and sit the on or this shit. We haven't, we haven't called in and ordered it yet, but, um, I think it's probably something we wanna probably get done. Because the frame is, uh, I think a little way later, so.
And water coming in, is that what's right?
Well, I don't think getting water leaking in, but it's, the door just doesn't close right.
Yeah, that's one corner, you could hardly use it outside. It just seems like a lot of doors to be.
Don't ever get used.
That's what we said.
Metal and all the frame and, and take a lot of labor to fix all that stuff, oh. Tell them, I need, but I request that these doors are made so that kids can't reverse them.
Why would you reverse them? It would be adults that did that.
It was adults?
Yes.
They didn't put them back, right?
As an adult.
I'll make a motion to approve replacing the north doors in the elementary building. Around last age for seven thousand three hundred forty-two dollars.
The proxy one.
The proxy one.
They, they said they thought the, the guy, he won't do as much there.
Any of your second?
I'll second.
Okay, Boone seconded? Vicki?
Yes.
Steve? Myself, yes, Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. I think your directors report.
Grammar check there.
Okay.
Respect this to read it?
Probably the only big thing is, is I've asked for two things to consider for budget for next year. And it wasn't, I wasn't trying to go above Mr. Alt on that or whatever, it's just a couple of things I think we need to look at probably doing. Probably doing next year, with the track respraying and.
So you're talking about, you're not talking about over the summer of the summer, you're talking about?
With you guys doing gym floor and lighting and all that, you've pretty much expended that. I'm thinking, because these are some pretty big ticket items, if you wanna look at putting them in the budget or whatever.
So they could do that next spring, right before the season?
However.
I mean, that would be a.
Or however would work best, so.
Well, if you approve it, you have nothing to fall on, except that there's trouble.
I mean, it's, it's a fairly short process to do it. I mean, a lot, when we did that, um, the last time, I think they did it in the spring, they got it done. Before we started work, before the first track meet, then they had come back and they had to do some changes.
Do they, do they go in to rip all that old rubber off?
Um, I don't think they're gonna have to rip much off. There might be a couple of places they're gonna have to patch first, because they, we had to do some patching last year. And they may, you know, it might be a couple of places, I've noticed a couple of cracks in a couple of places, I think go in and probably cut these out, and then. Replace that, and then they'll do the spray the surface and reline it all the time.
For that amount of money you pay, you'd think. And what does that track average a year cost, unless it took ten years to average it for a year?
It's, when we resurfaced it last time, if I remember correctly, that was about sixty-five or sixty-seven thousand dollars. So it's expensive, I've no doubt about it.
Ten thousand dollars?
We did do some real leisure work to that.
Five years?
We did that at the end of my first year, at like, at the end of my, at the end of my first year, I think. I think we had, we used it in the first track season I was here, I think. Was it red before?
It was black before.
Then I think, I think we did, we had a version of seven, we did a week.
Or six.
Seven, so that's.
Ten thousand a year.
About ten thousand.
Plus all the extras that we do.
Maybe twenty.
What else did you have, besides the, doing the track?
Girls locker.
Oh, yeah, girls, lockers and the girls locker room. We have issues. They're totally, if, I don't know if you've ever been in the girls, not that you've ever had a reason to be.
We were in there looking around.
We always go in there.
Said we probably needed to buy some new lockers.
Well, and that's, our biggest issue with stuff laying around is they can't even fit a bag into the lockers. It's like the old boys, the old square.
Junior high ones.
And I mean, they can't fit anything in there, that's why towels hang around.
Some lockers, like we do with the boys, work in that locker room also.
I don't think you need anything that big, or, I mean, that what the boys used to have.
Probably be better.
Put them in there.
So can you have two layers of locker stacked up or something like that, or do you give away? Or do you need that?
Weren't those, or two on top of one another?
What's that?
No, they, yeah, they were on top of each other, but they were sections of six or three.
Which are?
The boys' lockers.
Oh, the junior, the little ones? They were just one single about.
But the little ones were too high.
Yeah, those were too high.
Yeah.
The junior high, the boys' locker.
That might be.
Is it something where you can look and see what's out there that would work and come up with a price so we can get it in the budget for next year?
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming, Mr. Alt, you probably have the information, what we kinda get, I mean, just the companies that we used before.
We get magazines that have lockers probably for that.
So, and Gail, I mean, I mean with Gail, too.
Yeah, I mean, you know, just before, you know.
They're just big ticket items.
In the summer sometime.
They're just big ticket items, that's why.
Yes, but, you know, so we've got a dollar now, so we can get it in the budget.
Do they put those in? Who put those in last time? The ones the boys got, they were a company out of Iowa.
So he bought it, so he got it? He bought it from them and they put them in?
No, no, actually, Gail sold.
We had somebody that bought this mount, local, and we'll deal with it.
Okay.
We could actually run over them ourselves, it couldn't really say that about that.
Yeah, that sounds good, put those in the budget next year. We got any other major things we gotta put in next year? That we were kinda talking about?
You're gonna have to look at the section roof down here.
Okay. How about buses?
I'm gonna need to look at possibly a van. We may wanna do a van on this year's budget, you know, I mean, yeah.
It's our sped van.
We did quite a few miles on it, because it runs a lot, runs a lot of miles. That might be something to look at this summer, you know, we need to look at, have it come next year.
Do you do a rotation?
Can you make a note of that?
Just buy a deal in for that?
We're talking.
I've talked to Bob, uh, about both of those. You know, we, we did budget for a bus this year. I mean, we could actually physically put it in the line items, with the idea that we may or may not, we just have some money in there. Uh, but I guess we were choosing that, although it's different money, because we have sped money that's budgeted, we didn't budget for a sped van, I don't think. That's probably a more priority right now than doing bus, but next year, I think we're gonna wanna look.
So do we have money in the, in the budget this year for a bus?
Yeah, we budgeted for it.
Do we need to buy that this year?
Well, we can budget some. We might wanna look at that, yeah.
Can we buy the, the van instead with that money being just budgeted for a bus?
What's that?
Can you use it to buy the van instead being just budgeted for a bus?
Well, I mean, we got money in the budget with that, yeah. The, the van would be paid for on special education money, we're gonna budget it.
So you, you wanna go through that process?
Yeah, I mean, if we buy it for sped, that's what it's gonna go under, then we spend it under, it's gonna get code in the special education, whether we have budgeted or not for that.
So we could buy those without budgeting for it next year?
I think, I think, you know, as it gets closer to the year, I think something that Mr. Alt might wanna look at is, you know, right at the end there, he might wanna spend some money. That might be a couple of items to do, but I have to remove that money to depreciation fund to use for the gym, lighting and that. You might wanna have it there for purchasing a bus, okay?
Thank you.
It's all just right there.
Okay.
Best speech.
Did I want to order that? Oh, mine's pretty, um, easy. NISA testing is complete, I did see all of our preliminary scores. I don't see the test scores changing. Um, we were supposed to have an email back, we did, um, for lack of a better word, protest, appeal, whatever you wanna call it. About five of our writing tests, that we didn't approve their scores, and they were supposed to be notified May second, and they approved that date back. So we don't know if we want our appeals case or not. Um, next year, obviously, um, the first two things kinda tie together. The state legislature passed the ACT as a replacement for the NISA testing for the juniors. Um, I, I don't know whose idea this was, and I don't care if it rests with people in the state legislature. But I'm not absolutely in favor of this in any way, shape, or form. Um, NISA was never supposed to be a timed test. Uh, we're trying to figure out how this thing gets administered, because we don't own the rights to the ACT test. Supposedly, they're going to just let high schools do it, and they're supposed to be going to pay for it. We all know how that's gonna work, they're gonna pay for it one year, and they're gonna be stuck paying for it. Um, works great in a bigger school, where we have twenty-two kids taking the test. You know, I can get kids, and, and the teachers as well, we can get the kids excited about, not excited, a better word is, um, we can get them to take the NISA test serious. But you have kids that know they're not going to a four-year school, and they don't have to have the ACT. That, I think we're talking a totally different mind frame.
Well, it's college testing, and it's not geared for Asian students, and they're not gonna do well on it. Right? They're not prepared to take that, are they?
Well, we're gonna have a lot of kids that won't be prepared for it.
And they'll have to take it?
It's mandated by the state.
What if they don't, what if they're not, you know, in our school?
You just have to take it.
Yeah.
No questions.
I guess it's the, the replacement to the NISA, and I, I just don't.
Really discuss what's, that's gonna do Nebraska's high ranking on A C T. Nebraska's been one of the top one or two states.
Well, those kids, if they aren't going to school, they aren't gonna, they're just gonna go scribbling in ovals, and they aren't gonna care.
Well, and then, and then you have the side where, I don't know how many thousands of dollars and, and just the time. Well, Mr. Green, you remember these days, where we wrote curriculum. Well, now, before you could just adopt the state standards, and say, that's pretty much my curriculum, and you find the book that matches and goes with state standards. That's, now our three through eight people are gonna be on the state standards, and our nine through twelve people, which there's no such thing as twelfth grade standards, they can call whatever they want. But they have to know everything by their junior year. So they're gonna now have to turn around and write curriculum. Fortunately, um, we do have somebody that is very anal on our staff, and I do have the social studies curriculum that we used to have, and we spent hours on. Um, I don't even know if the, the other, the other stuff exists. I, it probably has long been gone, because we haven't needed it for how many years. So now, these people are gonna have to spend all this time rewriting all their curriculum, and I just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but. I don't know, I run the legislature, so there you go. Um, the, uh, Platteville High School was again named to the U S News and World Report as one of the best high schools in the country. Um, we were nationally recognized. One of the things that deemed us is that we don't offer AP courses, and that was the new thing that they added. And as you go through the list, um, it was basically all of the, Oakdale was one of the top schools in Nebraska, both of them, it was the schools that do AP. And, and we don't offer those. Basically, you take one test and that decides if you're gonna pass or not. I don't know if that's the way we wanna go, but, uh, anyway, it's still a, a pretty good honor, because it's been the third year in a row. Um, we are working on scheduling, um, kind of put that on hold to see what's gonna come about for Wednesday, because that will make a difference. Um, I know that there were some parent grumbling, so if you got any phone calls, uh, some of these kids signed up for twelve classes, and they don't want me to put anything opposite of band vocal, FFA, FCCLA classes. And Spanish classes, plus all their core. That's not gonna happen. And regardless of, of what we try to do, yes, they're probably going to have to choose which, which one they want. Um, we had the discussion that, you know, you get, we talked about this with speech. You get eighty percent of our kids out for speech, then I can probably do something. But when we're only getting twenty-five kids, that's less than a fourth of our school population, I can't protect those classes. I, I just can't do it, so, uh, but when you sign up for twelve and fourteen classes, there's just no way that's gonna happen. So, uh, we, we do take it very serious, and, and I know that comment keeps coming out, that kids can't take certain classes. You're right, they probably can't. But when I have twenty-five kids in there, and I still have a hundred and fifty out there that still need classes, there's not much I can do. Um, boy, uh, just look at the schedule, it's every single day, there is absolutely something on the schedule. Um, summer, I think, is about as full. Um, might have to do some rearranging of things because of the gym work, but, uh, there is just something every single day. District music, band and choir both received a two. Uh, we had numerous solos, duets, ensembles, they all performed well, and everyone received a one or a two. Um, which, in all essence, is pretty darn good, because they could get threes, and, and there were some. The one thing that I wanna compliment our, our teachers on, and our students, is that there are days when I wonder what they're doing in the hallways. But when we go somewhere, we have some of the most well-behaved kids ever. We were, we were at a track meet, junior high kids, of course, and we are watching them literally take a five hundred dollar pole vault pull, and throwing it in the ground like it's a javelin. And then trying to swing on it, as it's stuck in the ground. Um, our kids are always very well behaved, very polite, uh, clean up after themselves, so that's some, not, not just at district music, but I'm gonna go and watch their activities. I mean, they just, they know how to behave, they know what they're supposed to be doing. And I guess it's kinda like your own children at your house, you're, you know, they might do things at your house that you don't want them to do, but we don't see that here, so.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
And I'm glad you dropped it up. I was sitting in the bleachers at a track meet, and you know, just, just watching. One of our high school students walked across the football field, from over by the, where the starting line, and over to the shed, basically, is how. Gets about to the middle of the football field, stopped, picked up a bottle, water bottle, whatever it was. And I watched him, and I think, is he gonna throw this at somebody? Is he, what's he gonna do with it? He walked it over, over towards the shed, and threw it in the trash. There was nobody around him, nothing, so I, I happened to run into him in the restroom the, the next, like, the next day or next Monday, whatever it was. You know, I gotta talk to you about something. I saw you do that, you know, and I think, you know, I thought that was really a, a very positive thing, that a high school boy would pick up probably somebody else's water bottle from the trash, and carry it that far and throw it in the trash.
Well, today we cleaned, and, and another example, we cleaned lockers for the seniors. Tomorrow's it, it's really quiet down there, that already don't like it. And there was trash on the floor, and, and Trevor Belt said he was picking up trash or something, and he goes, you're gonna miss me next year. I've talked about the other one that never picks up trash in the hallway, and I will tell you, he is very good about that. He sees trash laying around, he'll stop, I think it's actually in class, but, um, he does stop and pick up all the trash that he sees, wherever he is. So, I mean, our kids are very good in that aspect. Um, FFA and FCCLA held their annual banquet, one was in here and one was in the gym, because there was no time. So you get to run back and forth if you wanted to see those.
At the same time?
Yeah.
I'll tell you, kids, who?
It was just one, and he, he and Mrs. Jacobson had worked it out so that she could get her stuff here, and then run over there.
There's only one kid that does well?
Mm-hmm.
Is that because of time issue, or it's just the other ones?
Well, I think it's because they, they don't wanna miss all those days in school. We do have kids that don't go to things because they lose too much school. They, they are not going. Which is, you know, pretty good insight to what they, they know they need to do. Um, art show was April twen- a week of April twenty-fifth. Um, I think out front, some of the stuff is displayed, Mrs. Wacker put it out there, she did not give me any results, but I didn't know that a couple of kids received some of the high honors. Elementary music program was May third, and of course, it was cute, and we had graduation and all that fun stuff. I did cry a pomp in circumstance, always do, always will. Um, teachers were treated to a breakfast by the various boosters that we have in the school for National Teacher Appreciation Week. Junior high speech was May fifth. Um, there's some very, very good kids coming up in that category, so. Um, honors night is tomorrow night, graduation is May fourteenth, Mr. Green, you need to be here at two thirty. Uh, bring your smile, because you'll take pictures, close it, I believe, May twenty-ninth, band trip is twenty-seventh through the thirtieth.
I'm gonna be here for practice, do I?
Oh, yeah, practice is Friday at eight thirty.
Yeah, I almost got it.
You really don't have to count to practice if you don't want to.
It was gonna be safe, it was last.
Absolutely.
Different kids, few different kids, I was gonna say.
You can give the welcome.
And then we'll just have Mr. Klein sit.
I had a parent ask today about anything on the girls' basketball coach.
Um, Mr. Frederick and I just talked about that today, we're gonna try to sit down and try to put something together.
I mean, they just wanna, you know, cause camps and all that good stuff.
Well, Mr. Anderson has volunteered to kinda step up and guide those kids through some of that stuff, until that person gets in place. We're gonna try to get them in place as soon as we can, but.
You got somebody in mind?
Maybe.
Maybe.
You have a volunteer, I know that.
No, why not?
No, I said you have a volunteer.
We do?
Oh, yeah. In some way, aren't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, we do, I do want to.
I don't know what.
Does your, does your science teacher have any coaching aspirations?
No.
Do you have any other hires anywhere that?
No. Not at this point, so.
You may have to go with a volunteer then, or?
Well, we have people on staff that are capable of doing it, and they may just do these as assigned.
But when would you be your last, you know, what, what's your deadline as far as wanting to have someone in place?
Um, as soon as we know what's going on on Wednesday.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Wednesday's gonna have a huge impact on, on decisions that get made within the next week.
Oh, cause you could move a junior high coach at times?
They have to move, yep, so that will have a huge impact on this.
But we're not talking girls. Junior high is great.
Well, no, but some of those people that could coach.
Oh, the boys could coach, yeah.
So. And I'm not really gung ho, and I don't think either of these two are either about having your junior high be your high school coach, that's a lot of coaching and those are long days. And it makes them not wanna do their job anymore.
And also, I mean, my opinion, we've kinda been down that road about forcing somebody to help coach, not wanting to be there.
Right, right.
And I, I don't know that that's as good as maybe somebody that wants to be there, maybe isn't quite as good, capable, but wants to be there and willing to try and put the time in. So I'm just saying that.
Well, but they have to be certified, and that takes a little while for them to get the certification.
Yeah. It's not so big anymore, I don't think, is it?
Certification, yeah, they have to have, yeah.
It is.
Yeah, they have to have that.
I know they have to have it, but it's not that hard to get, it was Tom got it, and he said it wasn't that big a deal.
That makes nine hours.
What's he saying about Tom?
Well, Tom has a lot of schooling under his belt.
That qualified.
Just they can be done online now, which makes it easier.
Yeah.
Easy to.
But I'm just saying that, you know, I don't want somebody to do that.
Yeah, I, I'm just. Tom didn't have to have a change, but it's gotta be assisted.
You gotta be certific, in certification.
It's not like a two-day class.
No.
I mean, yeah.
Well, Tom didn't have to have one, to be an assistant, you don't have to have that.
Just the head coach.
I would just hate to force somebody into doing it if they don't wanna do it, because I don't.
Well, I don't necessarily know that it's not that they don't want to do it, but they would maybe just prefer not to.
Cause also keep in mind, if they're not in the district, if they're not in the buildings, it is terrible to try to communicate.
Oh, I'm sure it is, yeah.
I've been down that road a lot.
Yeah. We're lucky if Mr. Knoc doesn't have a thing else to do all day. So he comes in on a regular basis. Not that we don't love him.
Yeah.
But we're, we're gonna wait till Wednesday, kinda to see where, that's gonna have the decision on the scheduling, and it'll have a decision on our coaches.
Cause we talked about sending down Thursday.
Yes, we did. You bring the donuts?
Same time.
I don't know. Oh, there was one other thing. Um, I forgot, sorry. Um, if you aren't doing anything June sixth, and you want to go down and welcome home the veterans that our kids sponsored, they did not sponsor Butch from, by the way, that was wrong in the paper. They just presented it to a Vietnam veteran from this area, because Butch has been there, I think, what'd he say, fifteen times, he has a son out there or something? But they wanted to present it to someone that had served in the Vietnam War, and then he talked to them a little bit afterwards. And they can follow it on Facebook and Snapchat, and so they're gonna follow the, that day, because they had donated enough to sponsor a person, and I think our person was from Pierce that they sponsored. And then they're coming back, if we were closer, I told them I would take them to Epley Airfield because they get back at nine o'clock that night, and so that's all gonna be broadcast, and they can follow it on Snapchat. So they got a really nice letter from both people, that girl that got us started, and then the people that did the honor flight, so. I thought that was a very cool thing that they chose to do. Okay, now I'm done.
I don't know anything. Mr. Alt? Do you have any? Um.
Do we like, wanna, um?
We, we're looking at the possibility of maybe remodeling the shed that's out there, uh, since out by the shop area. That was used for trash, which we're not using for now. I think we're gonna look at putting a, have a roll-up door in the east end, and then Gail will use that to store the hot cat, and like a snow blower and a bucket or, you know, whatever in there. Get some of the stuff out of the shops, we're gonna look at doing that. Uh, gym floor, we talked to the gentleman on that, I still don't know for sure what it's gonna cost, we're looking at doing like plain view on one end. Pirates on the other end, and then we're gonna do a pirate head, probably like similar to the ones out in the hallway here, probably just in black. That will go probably extend outside of the center circle. And that's, I think, all we're gonna do for that. The, uh, gym lights, I think, uh. It's gonna start on next Monday, I believe, sixteenth, hopefully, having a hard time finding days with all the camps and everything, or nights that we can, you know, do it, but I think it's gonna get started on that so we can get it done. Uh, Ms. Novick, you mentioned graduation Saturday at four. Uh, I'm gonna hand this out, you can take this one with you, it's, we got our, uh, visitation report. On our, uh, s- uh, school improvement visitation report, uh, you can take that and look at it. I think we had this ready for the board meeting last night.
April sixth is when it was.
Yes, we would've had it, I mentioned, I think, the things that they had talked about, and it's pretty much the same, the same thing, so. Uh, they were pressed with, uh, I think overall with the school and, and, uh. What we were doing, uh, with our reading program and those types of things, they did make some suggestions, you know, as far as, uh. Uh, you know, a couple of things with, uh. Uh, I think it was a science table, I don't, that's in our science, uh, sta- uh, table or something over in the elementary and. Uh, getting the staff development, you know, kinda trying to get teachers more locked into that as, uh, maybe on their own rather than being, you know, down the top and that type of thing. See, take that moment, look at it, uh, if there's any questions, contact me or Ms. Novick about it. And the last thing I'd talk about, I don't think we talked about this on the call up the Wednesday night, I'm kinda now I'm leaving, uh, in front of my office, six thirty. I'll just have the big van, and there you go.
Six thirty, you wanna pick me up at the junction? Six fifty? About forty?
About eighty.
Twenty minutes up there.
Junction.
Yeah, that's the time I'll get there, though. I think it only takes ten minutes to get the crane, so I wanna move here six forty. Um. You putting the plain view pirates on the baseline or on the sideline here for?
We're gonna put it on the baseline, so it's plain view on the side, out of bounds, it'll be like four foot letters, I think, four foot, three and a half foot. Pretty much fill that space up pretty well, it's between the outbound line and the wall. So, plain view on one end, pirates on the other side.
Did we, are we gonna do any painting, like elementary and the hallways or?
Right, I'll say most of it's. I think Gail got that on this bucket. We've got, we're doing a couple rooms.
Color, colors or?
I think we're gonna do, you know, we're gonna do a lighter, like a white, and then I think we're gonna do, we're gonna do instead of two red stripes, I think we're just gonna do one, one broader red stripe and then probably.
Like what's in the solid?
A gray or something on the bottom, so it won't be a lot different for cabinets.
I think the cabinets over in elementary?
On those, uh, we'll probably try and do some more, I actually have, uh, a bid from Jim Buckley, our assistant custodian who's doing that, so. We have contact artists, yeah, about what happened. We'll get some more done.
Anthony doesn't do it, when he works at Carhartt's.
Oh, that's right.
I already talked to him, I'll do it.
I know you, you did talk about two tone of the floor, or not?
Oh, yeah, I did mention that, we are doing that, the, the staining inside the three-point line, not the old dark, I'm sorry, I meant.
No, I, I like that, I agree with that, yeah.
Cause he said, the more paint you put on the floor, the harder it is to do it.
But you want it to look nice.
Oh, well, this looks really nice.
I think the lettering is gonna be, that'll be painted, I think red is, that's gonna have like. It's, it's very similar to the lettering, the lettering is on the, uh, mats on the end. From this one, this will look like, it'd be bigger.
That's it.
They will be doing a sideline, down near the side of the floor, like down the corner of the sidelines, on the floor. I think one of the lights done by.
But down there you get, where you've got the mat, which has stuff on it, then you've got that right away on the floor, so you have the floor, yeah, it's all.
Yeah, it's all nothing else.
Vicki, do you remember who made the very first motions tonight about approving the consent, consent agenda? For some reason I spaced out, I put, you made the motion and Salger seconded, was that right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, for some reason.
I heard something about pads up in the.
Uh, I am looking into that, uh, we're gonna have to contact the guy again, I have a bid from last year, see if they change the bid on that, and you know, if words don't run.
You're planning on doing heat in the shed or anything, I mean, is that gonna be a problem if it's not heated or are you planning on heating it?
No, no.
Everything will still start all right.
I've thought about heat, heat, I'm not complaining on you.
You guys know that they're having that open house with the gym for the van.
Right.
Cut your fine dollars.
You can probably just go in.
I know, but it's right now, I'm gonna send this right now.
You're starting to sell.
So you guys know what's going on. Start a plan or?
They just, they just pick all the, they pick the popular stuff because it's, it's gonna be a big next year.
Put them in the, with all their new stuff that they're gonna show on.
Are we adjourned?
You say we are.
We're.
See you Wednesday night.
Thanks.
Thank you.